All the Human Services Committee's members, with their flag of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Thank you. First order of business is the Department of Social Services. We have no report, but, okay, please come forward.
My apologies that I got the report out a little bit late. I'm still learning the rules, so you should have received a report. And in addition to that, I just wanted to mention to you, I just thought it would be valuable to let you know that we've had five security issues since January. One in which a caseworker's life was very seriously threatened. A one in February where the client threatened the caseworker and threatened to drive their car into the courthouse. The caseworker was threatened not to come to the case address and not to investigate the case, or there would be ramifications. When we took a child into custody, the client used abusive language and threatened to burn her own aunt's house down. And Friday, as recently as Friday, a teen client, a teen of a client, threatened not to cooperate with a scheduled home visit and stated that they would bring the largest knife that they could find with them if they were forced to. So I just kind of wanted to let you know that, so that you understand what our caseworkers are up against very often. We do have a security team that meets regularly to address these issues. Mr. Manning and Mr. Salati are both on that, but I just kind of wanted to give you an idea of the severity of things that occur every day in the field. And these are the worst of them. I think caseworkers often get so accustomed to certain, you know, some threats that they don't even listen or pay attention, or think that they're serious, but we are trying to work with them to have them report every threat, so that every threat is taken very seriously. So we just wanted the board to know that. I have three resolutions that I would, well, three budget amendments that I'm requesting a resolution authorizing for. One is the DSS 2017 Budget Amendment for Enhanced CPS SR-10 Funding. That is a grant. We had, we were allocated $50,000 based on a grant that I wrote last year, and that ends actually in, at the end of March. And we have used $18,400 of that, so I'm asking that that budget amendment be approved.
An endorsement of this resolution? Mr. Marugue, a second. Mr. Pallidi. Any questions or concerns? Yes, Mr. Monti.
What was the total of that grant, Suzanne?
We could use up to $50,000. We used only what we needed.
How much have you used?
$18,000.
Oh, this is a first, okay.
This is what we used.
First shot, okay.
That's right.
Thank you.
Any further questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Carry.
The next two budget amendments are moving money forward from previous years to the 2017 budget. I want to do this in order. So the first one is increasing appropriations by $453 and increasing revenue by $453. That's bringing the non-residential domestic violence allocation forward to 2017. Do you want to, do we keep going with that?
We give second, an endorsement of this resolution. Mr. Monti, a second. Mr. Marugue. Any questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Carry. Next.
And the final one is doing a similar thing, bringing the money from '15 into 2017, and that total was $24,999, and also so that we can use that in this year, so.
An endorsement of this resolution, Mr. Monti, a second. Mr. Preston. Any questions or concerns in regards to this resolution? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Carry.
And then just any questions?
Are there further questions or concerns in regards to Human Services here?
Randy Don, so we do, just for a second. Probing.
Mr. Hillland. Okay, and, can we vote on that? Okay. Moving on, you had a question?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. Those threats that you were talking about, Suzanne over here, what were the outcomes or consequences? What did your people do?
I think two of them. The police were called. On the one that I found to be very serious, we made sure that the caseworker was escorted to her vehicle. And right now, we're in a situation where that person who made the threat is continuing to come to the department on an ongoing basis because of visitation with their children, so we're making sure that that particular caseworker is not here, so that they can't follow her to her car, or know where her office is, or anything like that. We did call the police, they weren't able to do anything, and that particular threat involved several agencies, so.
Thank you. My other question is, given the, the good chance there's a new person coming into Social Services, whether it's you as Commissioner, or someone else, what do you think? You think it would be a good idea to maybe have a complete audit of the Social Services finances?
I see.
In fairness to the new person coming in?
I would have no objection, and I mean, I think that it would be a good idea. Honestly, I don't know what that would entail, so I wouldn't, you know, certainly I would have no objections to that, and would certainly encourage it.
I think it would be, personally, I think it would be a great idea, just out of fairness to the new person coming in. Not saying that there was anything done wrong, but at least, I know some of the programs have audits that are included in them, but it isn't a complete audit of the whole program.
It certainly would present a fresh start.
I would make a recommendation to the Human Services Board that we do that.
You have something to say, Mr. Preston, in regards to that?
I have a question. In regards to the ongoing saga of the home inspections?
Yes.
I'm kind of curious, have you received any communication from OPWDD in the last seven to 10 days?
OPWDD?
Yep.
I have not.
Because I was told by the Governor's Office that a communication went to Social Services in regards to this.
I have not received anything. I will tell you that John, his last day here was the 8th, and I believe he's continued to receive email at this point, so I'm not sure.
I will follow up. I actually reconfirmed this morning that it was sent, and when I'm reading here said in fact it was. So I will follow up on that, but I was told that a letter was sent in regards to that, to Social Services from the Governor's Office. So I'll follow up and see where it is.
So it's actually the letter that I'm looking for?
Yes. I will see where it is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We're very much aware of that situation, and I'm personally, I'm glad that you are demonstrating some perseverance on this and trying to bring resolution to the questions that this has brought to the county. Any other concerns, or yes?
Would it be a benefit to have GPS tracking on the vehicles, the workers' cars that they're using? I mean, sometimes sure before they go, there's places that are questionable and are going to be received.
I think that's a great idea, and I will suggest that to the security team. Thank you. It's a very good idea. They do have cell phones that can be tracked, but so many places, they don't have signal, you know, they're not able to reach. Thank you. Right. We do have a system where they sign out, and there's someone, you know, at the end of the day, the caseworker checks in with a particular worker, but the GPS on the cars might be a very good idea.
Mr. Pallidi?
Suzanne, in the same light, do these, do these caseworkers carry any form of protection whatsoever?
No.
Mace, or?
Nothing like that.
Nothing like that?
If they do.
Just a cellphone, that's the only, the only form of protection they have, is to call someone?
Is to call someone? If we know that a home is particularly dangerous, we'll send two workers out, or we'll ask people to come to the building, but the law requires that we meet people face-to-face in their home through Child Protective Services and Children's Services in particular, so we try to do everything that we can. But as you know, you know, if you're meeting people, if there's a Child Protective Services report, and someone goes out for the first time, you really don't know what you're going to run into, so.
Dan, you and I have talked about this in the past, about, at least around this facility, personally, I think there's a need for cameras.
Yeah, we have, yeah, we have a certain amount of, a certain amount of cameras that are located throughout the facility. There's not as many of them on the outside of the facility, which I think is a need that we do need, have to look at.
Especially around the courthouse, District Attorney's Office, Social Services, I mean, those are hotspots, I think. And I don't know what the cost would be, but, it's certainly something, I think, that for protection of everyone, the parking areas especially, I think it would resolve a lot of potential future issues.
Or Mr. Scott's father?
I could be wrong, but I believe that we were told a few years ago that we could not put him in Social Services because of confidentiality issues.
Depends on where it is. I mean, if you're talking about public areas, you can. If you're talking about areas that are not considered public, you can't. There are some requirements. I think more so than anything else, where we're lacking in terms of cameras, is on the outside of the.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Outside the perimeter of the.
We have nothing across the street. We have, you know, and a lot of our people that do have to leave and go across the street to the parking lot are essentially without any cameras over there. We have a few cameras that show some shots, but not very much on the outside.
We do have cameras inside the secure area as well.
Other questions or concerns? Mr. Monti?
I'd like to offer that as a resolution, to go out to, if we go out to RFP for.
Well, you're gonna have to go out to RFP, and just so you understand, you're talking a significant amount of money. You're not talking, this is, this is, to take on an $18 million budget audit of Social Services with the vast array of different programs that they have within that, is gonna take some very high-skill audit.
I'm aware of that. We do it at daycap every year.
Well, yeah, this is, again, I'm just telling you, you're talking about a lot of money. If you want to go out to RFP to see what that is, we can do that, but.
I'd like to offer that as a resolution.
Resolution has been made, a second to that.
I'll second for discussion.
Mr. Scott's father, questions or concerns, clarifications in regards to this? Yes?
I know doing a single audit is expensive, because we've had to do them in Mariah. Anytime you receive so much money in federal funds, you're required to do a single audit. You know, I have all the confidence in the world in our CPA, Linda Wolf, who has a good handle on all those numbers. You know, I'm not certain if it's, didn't we just have an audit by the state here not too long ago?
Yeah, we had it a couple of years ago, three years ago, that you had state audit. So, I mean, I'm not. And even a single audit, you gotta understand, is a very narrowly defined audit, which really does make the process much less costly, so to speak, but it's still very expensive. If you were gonna take on all the programs within DSS as an audit of an $18 million operation, you're looking at a fairly significant amount of money, and you're talking about a fairly significant amount of time to accomplish it. There was a chain of stuff that did go around at one time. There are a bunch of DSSs that have considered that option, but ultimately chose not to. The money is pretty tightly regulated in terms of not only what we do here, in terms of what Linda does as our CPA, but you don't get any money from the state unless the state knows exactly how you spent that money and how it was used. Again, I'm not opposed to it, I just, don't be, don't be surprised at the sticker shock.
I'm not opposed to it, I, you know, we can at least, this resolution is just to go forward with RFP, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions in regards to this resolution? Mr. Marugue?
Oh, not the resolution, but could we just, I know Wells Communication will put a GPS tracker, costs a little under $300, and I think it's $19 a month, maintenance fee, just to try a couple of them, so we'd see if they would work, and if we follow up on them.
I mean, we can certainly do that, but again, if we were going to do that, we'd have to go out to bid, I mean, we'd have to do that. I have to tell you that I know Nancy Dougal has been talking about having hers done. I think she actually had, under the Transportation Department, there was actually a company that offered that as a service that we could look at. It's probably something we could extend beyond the Transportation Department if we chose to. Well, let me, let me talk to Nancy and see where it is in terms of, I know she's brought that up a couple of times.
We moved it last month.
I almost think you did, but again, I'm not certain, so let me, let me just verify with Nancy.
I went over those bits that Nancy had, and they were a little higher, but I know Wells Communication sells a simple little unit that plugs into any vehicle, they give them one the other even, and it costs $19 a month after you pay $300.
Yeah.
Just to try it, and if you're out of it, I'm looking for some for the downed straws, I would buy them.
We have a resolution on the floor involving an audit for the Department of Social Services. All those in favor, I do believe you need to raise your hands, those people on the Human Services Committee, if you're in favor of this. And opposed? Okay, that's passed. Any other questions for Human Services this morning? Thank you.
Thank you.
Public Health? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mental Health.
Good morning.
So I have one resolution here, as before you. It's a resolution authorizing a budget amendment request for the Mental Health Department to increase revenue in the amount of $12,750 to account number 43489DSR, and to increase expenditures in the amount of $12,750 to account group 43204, account number 5445, Consultants. This is, will reflect additional payments for participation in the DISRIP Integrated Delivery System Project, otherwise known as DISRIP.
An endorsement of this resolution by Mr. Pallidi, a second please, Mr. Hillland, questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Carry.
Thank you. So I have submitted my monthly report, and in the interest of time, I'm not going to go through and read through this report, you have it in front of you, except that I would like to just take a moment to talk a little bit about the electronic medical record. Our new EMR is, has, we've been working on this for about six months in terms of implementation, and we're set for go-live tomorrow morning. Our consultant called this morning and wanted to have me check the weather to make sure that he was gonna be able to get in and out okay, and the county was gonna be open. I said, "Yeah, I think so. Six inches of snow shouldn't stop us here in Essex County." But basically, I just wanted to acknowledge the very hard work that my staff has undertaken in the past six months. This affects everybody from clerical, all the therapists, the medical staff, everyone, and the administrative staff. In particular, Assistant Director Annie McKinley, Deva Clement, Sean Ganter, and Bev Spalding, and Bree Venn. They've been doing just a fantastic job for us, and I'm very confident that the implementation's gonna go very well tomorrow. Beyond that, if anybody has any questions about anything else in the report, or about the EMR?
No further questions from Mr. Marugue?
Okay, so we do have a presentation today. We want to talk a little bit about suicide prevention services and efforts that have been going on inside of Essex County. The Coalition, the Essex County Suicide Prevention Coalition is comprised of representatives from a number of county departments and agencies, such as, and some of the folks are here today, Public Health is involved, the Mental Health Association, the clinic, of course, the Mental Health Department, Office for Aging, Emergency Services, agencies such as the Prevention Team, and Families First sit at the table and are actively involved, and the New York State Police. So since the Coalition was formed in 2011, the rate of completed suicides in Essex County has been cut in half to around 13 per 100,000. Still, the, this rate is still significantly higher than the statewide rate, which is about eight per 100,000. We at the Coalition operate on the premise that each and every human life is precious and valuable, so one suicide is one too many, and so we continue to press and to work on this issue. The emphasis of our work so far has been to increase public knowledge and awareness through community education. And this is based on the theory that suicide prevention is everyone's business, so the more people we have on the job, the better we're going to do. So today, we have Shelby Davis here, who's gonna come up in a few minutes, from the Mel, Shelby was with the Mental Health Association, and she's gonna provide each of you with a resource packet, actually, you have it in front of you on your desk, that has a lot of information in there about the community trainings and presentations that are available to you and your towns, any organizations or groups in your towns that would like to have Shelby and/or some of the other members of the Coalition come and talk to folks in your community about what is available. So I'd like to ask Shelby to come up, and I'm going to take a moment to hopefully not embarrass Shelby, but I just want to let everybody know that last year at the New York State Suicide Prevention Council's annual conference, Shelby was awarded with an Excellence in Suicide Prevention Award, a statewide award, one of a small handful of people. So I have been remiss in not acknowledging that and publicizing that in Essex County, but I wanted to do that today. Shelby has done a fantastic job tirelessly working to train and educate folks throughout the county, and help in also post-vention response to suicides that are completed. So I'll present Shelby, and Shelby's gonna have a brief presentation, and I'll.
Thanks, Steve. So yes, we'll focus on brief. So the Suicide Prevention Conference, that was held last year, I was very honored to receive that award, because I am a survivor of suicide loss. I've lost two family members unfortunately to suicide, so this work is very important to me. In your packets that you have, there is a lot of resources there. We gave, we gave these to you for two reasons. One is so that you know what sources and resources are available to you, but then also to let you know that we have these available on a larger scale, so if you would like any of these for your community, for your town hall, for your libraries, any of these materials we have available, and they're funded by grants, so we can reproduce them for you at no cost. There's also information there about trainings that are available. Our Coalition has a variety of certified trainers that are available to provide evidence-based training programs, also at no cost to you. Since 2014, our Coalition has provided over 30 different training programs in suicide prevention, intervention, and post-vention, which has resulted in over 500 people being trained in some form of gatekeeper program. Those classes include anything from a one-hour QPR training, which stands for Question, Persuade, and Refer, up to a two-day intensive intervention training called ASSIST. These trainers are available on an as-needed basis. Anytime you can get together a minimum of eight people, up to 20 to 30 people, we can schedule a training program. We've even customized training programs specifically for organizations like the DEC. We incorporated their search and rescue techniques into a program to help with lost hikers, with people that may be experiencing mental health conditions in the wilderness. We've also done training programs specifically for major employers like International Paper. So anytime there is a need for training when it comes to suicide prevention and awareness, we're available for many of your communities. Some other things I want to point out, we've also been focusing, as well as education for the general public, we've focused on schools. We've done a tremendous amount of outreach when it comes to schools. Members of our Coalition sit on crisis response teams in several schools within Essex County, and have been able to respond to the schools when we have students in crisis, and get them connected to resources, whether it's mental health or substance abuse, and have been able to successfully connect them with treatment. If a school does not have a crisis response team, we can help them in setting one up, and also facilitate practice ones with them, so that their teachers are prepared. And preparation is something else that we ask, I would ask you about your communities, is your community prepared to respond to a crisis if you have someone in mental health? Would that something else, in a mental health crisis, that's something else we can help you with. Is your, is your community prepared to respond to, if the worst should happen, if you have someone that has completed a suicide? Are you prepared to respond to that? We can help you with that. We consider post-vention as prevention. When someone does complete a suicide, there are now so many more people now at risk for completion of suicide, and we don't want that to happen. We don't want the worst to happen, first of all, in your community. So we can help you identify people at risk and get them connected with services before it gets to that point. Also, in your packet, I've put together kind of a presentation of some of the accomplishments of the Coalition, and also what we have looking forward, which includes crisis intervention teams, which are integrated with law enforcement. We've just received a state grant that will allow us to train specific members of law enforcement in mental health practices, so that they will be better equipped to handle going out on a call with someone experiencing a mental health crisis, and our mobile crisis team will be able to respond with them. Also, we are looking towards, hopefully someday, having a crisis stabilization center here in Essex County. We have too many, and I'm a 911 dispatcher as well, so I know for a fact that we have way too many emergency services responders being sent out on multiple calls for the same people, being taken to the emergency room, and being, having interactions with law enforcement due to substance abuse and due to mental health crises. I mean, really, they just need to be stabilized and connected with treatment programs. And we all know that our emergency responders are well overworked and stretched too thin. So a crisis stabilization center would be a huge advantage to our community, and we look to Dutchess County as their model. look to Dutchess County as their model. It's really amazing what they've done. But, there's also a handout in there about mobile crisis services. You may not realize that, our Mental Health Association provides mobile crisis services, which is my department. There's a link in there where you can initiate a mobile crisis referral, where I can respond when a member of my team can respond to your community twenty-four hours a day. It also provides the definition of what a mental health crisis, including substance abuse, might be. So those services are available to you and your community, along with walk-in services at the clinic and twenty-four hour on-call therapists. So we just wanted to make those known to you so that you have that at your fingertips if there is a crisis. So I appreciate you allowing me to come out and speak to you today, and please call on us if you need assistance. And if anybody needs any extra packets, I do have a few available, just let me know. Thank you.
Questions or concerns? Thank you very much for all the information you provided today. Just one, one closing comment I forgot to mention. We do have a number of the members of our Coalition in the audience today, so if folks would stand, I appreciate you coming out today. Just a few of the members that we have that are here today. But I have nothing else unless there are any questions.
Thank you very much. Public health?
Well, it's a jam-packed day today. I have the good fortune of working with Dr. McKeever for twenty-three years, and he is going to move on, and we have as the Medical Director of Essex County Public Health Department, and Dr. Michael John Salati is going to take his place, and we have a resolution of appreciation, and Randy Preston is going to read that for us today. And can I ask Dr. McKeever to come forward?
Please.
Okay. Resolution of congratulations and appreciation. Whereas, Dr. McKeever has been a faithful public servant to the people of Essex County with his position as Medical Director for the Essex County Health Department since 1993. And whereas, appropriately, Dr. McKeever was hired during Governor Mario Cuomo's proclaimed Decade of the Child, when healthcare and education initiatives were created to improve the lives of children in New York State. And whereas, Dr. McKeever prioritized the health, welfare, and safety of all Essex County residents. And whereas, during his tenure, he provided guidance for public health, children's services, WIC, and home health programs. And whereas, through his natural leadership abilities, he provided guidance for Public Health Advisory Committee of the Public Health Unit and the Professional Advisory Committee of the Home Health Unit. And whereas, his distinctive ability to concisely articulate with precise punctuation, the written word, was greatly appreciated by the entire department in ongoing improvements of its guiding documents. And whereas, his warm smile and cheerful disposition coupled with his sincere compassion for the population in which he supports. And whereas, Dr. McKeever is recognized by his local colleagues as a knowledgeable and trusted resource with whom it has been a great privilege to work. Be it resolved that the Essex County Board of Supervisors, its Clerk of the Board, County Manager, and County Attorney do hereby extend their appreciation and heartfelt thanks to Dr. McKeever for his dedicated, conscientious, and exemplary public service to the Health Department and the people of Essex County, and wish him continued success and good fortune in all his future endeavors. Thank you.
Bye.
Congratulations to thank you for your service. Thank you. Thank you all.
Do you have a unanimous second in regards to this resolution?
Thank you all very much. I have several resolutions, and I'm gonna go through them quickly, then in front of you. And I'd like to, the 2017 budget was incorrect by $4,659. It was a beginning balance, includes appropriations from 2016. Sorry, we're in the new staff and we missed that, and we're correcting it now, and so I'm asking to, for a resolution to, for the total $4,659.15 to be corrected in the balance of the Essex County Heron Opiate Non-Personal Service Line.
Resolution by Mr. Giudano, second. Mr. Mario, questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
I'd like to increase the appropriations for $2,192.10 for the Adelantik Rural Health Network Grant.
Resolution, please. Mr. Giudano, second by Mr. Giudano. Questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
The other resolutions I have, I have two policies and procedures. We do it every quarter. I have provided all the documentation, it's sitting on the desk in there. So, Dr. McKeever has already reviewed it, the Professional Advisory Council has reviewed it, the policies and procedure are there, so I'm looking for a resolution to do the advisory for public health and the home health unit that has already been approved by PAC.
Endorsement of this resolution? Mr. Paredes, second. Mr. Giudano, questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
I have a resolution that came in, and it's an exciting one, and you don't have it in front of you, but it is to accept money. So we have, you know that I've been actively engaged as Steve Valley and my cohort in OFA. We recently, and I mean last week, got a check for engagement funds for $33,235 for our involvement in the DISRIP and the Medicaid redistribution funds. So, I ask to accept three engagement funds, including and totaling up to $33,235 in DISRIP money to use, be used for training and other initiatives to reduce Medicaid rehospitalization.
Endorsement by Mr. Giudano, second. Okay, by Mr. Giudano. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
And the other one I have is the same kind of thing. I already came to the Board and asked to apply for what's called PAM, Patient Activation Motivation Money. I've received some of it, which is $3,457.22, so I'm asking for a resolution to accept
Endorsement of this resolution by Mr. Giudano, second. Mr. Wilson, questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
So I also had a power, I have a presentation today. I handed out the Essex County Heron Opiate Coalition, you should have received it in your packet. It is a blueprint. Kristi Sprague and myself, or the District Attorney, are the co-chairs of this coalition. A few weeks ago, some folks after this meeting stopped Kristi and myself and asked what was going on, and we thought it would be opportune to tell you about that today. Brooke Clark is gonna run a PowerPoint, and it will be quick, and you have some of the guiding papers in front, but may I ask that Kristi Sprague join me?
Yes, of course.
Thank you. Thank you. While we're waiting for this, I should tell you equally that I put my monthly update on your desk, it's the color one, sorry, printed on three pages. If there's anything you want changed, or you like that format or don't like that, if you feel any need to comment, I'd love to have your feedback. I know other people are doing different formats. I'm trying to tell a story of what's happened in the month ahead, I'm sorry, month behind, and give you a little idea of what's coming up. So, are we clear? We good? Okay. So the first pack, I shall start with saying that this Coalition was formed in May of 2015 to address growing heroin opiate epidemic in the North Country and to better assess current resources and connect and align various agencies working to tackle the problem. Myself and Kristi Sprague actually called the first meeting together. We had a small group of stakeholders, and since then, we have over forty members. Brooke told me today that we had two thousand hits on our website for Echo, and it's been extremely well-received. Go ahead. We have a mission and a vision, it's up there, to prevent and reduce heroin opiate abuse and addiction in Essex County through education and awareness, and our vision as a committee better prepared to take on challenges of heroin and opiate abuse and addiction. Go ahead. So we have lots of members as well, and there's several in the audience here today. Obviously, myself and Kristi. Major Tibbetts has been a fabulous resource for us. Dave Reynolds from the Sheriff's Department hasn't missed a meeting. Kristi Lurkies is on it. We've had lots of interest, and we've had a really fabulous Coalition. Steve Valley is on it. I could ask you to stand up, but in the essence of time, I'm gonna not today. Go ahead, Brooke. We created this matrix that was, I presented this at the NISAC Conference the year before last. It's my understanding like three or four counties actually picked up on this. It was a matrix that just helped us track where we were going. So Coalition, Coalition matrix is developed early on to build on capacities. What we decided to do is look at the things in the continuum, so it's prevention, intervention, treatment, and recovery. And along the left-hand version are the players, are people we thought that could influence it, and above the top are goals, and we change them accordingly by color if we have something going on in that. This started almost blank, just to give you an idea, and the colors are really filling in, so we're thrilled to have done that. Go ahead. So here comes Brooke. "In order to better establish a sustainable infrastructure, a grant was acquired by the New York State Health Foundation to develop an evidence-based best-practice regionalization approach for supporting each stage: prevention, intervention, treatment, and recovery. With appropriate strategies, Brooke Clark was hired as the Outreach Coordinator for this grant, bridging the gap, improving access and coordination of substance abuse resources in Essex County." So, this using the grant from, again, from the New York State Health Foundation has really been able to move all of us forward. So I'm gonna go on, go ahead. So I'm gonna talk about prevention, and I'll talk about some of the things, and then we'll talk about intervention, and I'll let Kristi talk about some of the things we've been to do that. Some of the things we've done, you've wondered what's going on. So we had Mike Nierny at Talk in Ticonderoga, we supported that. On Veterans Day in Lake Placid, we had Dr. Kalodny present a two-part series there. We've organized a student superintendent training in 2017. We recently met at BOCs with every single principal of every superintendent of every single school in Essex County and got a pledge from them that they're interested in having us come teach their teachers, as well as adding a curriculum so we get to the students. So we're very excited about that. We also aligned with Clinton County, because the BOCs are shared, so Clinton County is becoming a sister partner and doing exactly what we're doing in Essex. Part of Brooke's grant is written on regionalization. She doesn't just sit on ours, she sits on six other county coalitions. She's not just sitting on them, she's on their steering committees and whatnot, so she's, has the ability to take the best practices of every coalition and move them from place to place. What we're doing here, she shares with others, what other people are doing, she shares with us. It's been a wonderful opportunity. You can go to the next one. These are some of the programs, or I'm sorry, the advertisements we've put out. Social media presence is established, print media and local papers, full-page ads, half-page ads. These have been extremely successful. These ads have led to actual people calling, which we didn't expect. Actual people calling saying, "We need help, can you direct us?" Actual people saying, "I'm in crisis right now, can somebody do it?" And they're calling the Health Department, which was like, you know, it was unbelievable. So we're hooking them up with the mental health services, and it's been extremely successful. The Essex County Health Department conducted a biannual provider meeting, so we have the opportunity through Hudson Headwaters to get in every single one of our providers in Hudson Headwaters. Brooke Clark has had the opportunity to speak to every provider in this county and those regions and talk about prescriptions of opiates and discuss ESPT, which is the Screaming Brief Intervention and Referral to Treatment Program. So the next part is intervention, and one of the programs we've been working on is LEAD, and I'll let Kristi speak to that.
Okay. LEAD was a program that was started in Seattle. They had a pilot project that started there, and we had an opportunity to go to Albany to meet with the City Police Department and various agencies that are actually conducting a program that's called LEAD. It's law enforcement assisted diversion. What that means is it's looking at diverting a person, low-level drug offenders, prostitution, victimless sort of crimes, maybe harassment, discon, things where there's not any violence to the severity, where there's restitution or medical costs. And what they try to do is divert before the person is arrested into certain programs, whether it be they need housing for the night, whether they need clothing, medical care, and also drug treatment. So what they do is they're hooked up with a case manager, they're placed into a program, and then they're constantly followed up. The biggest part, and I think the biggest sell for me was, this is not something you can force the person to do. So they actually have so many hours, and I believe in Albany it was forty-eight, forty-eight hours to hook up with the case manager. If they don't, then it's up to the police to either, one, say, "Okay, let them go," or, "Two, go and arrest them and proceed with the criminal charge." It's, it's a cost savings in the fact that they're getting these people into treatment earlier, quicker. It's reducing recidivism, so they're not out there re-offending, and a lot of it are low-level crimes, you know, the criminal trespasses, the graffitis, urinating in public, the, you know, the low-level things that we think of, but also the ones that can escalate to a person ultimately ending up in prison. And one lady, we were, was one of the cases they had down there, was a parking ticket that ended up becoming fines after fines after fine. She was actually jailed for a multitude of time, and the fact that the only thing was, she just didn't have money, plus she had a substance abuse issue and things that weren't being addressed early on. It's, it's a tough sell for law enforcement, because on one end, we're pressured to make the arrest go after the high-level drug dealers and try to get the poison out of our community, yet you're also looking at, a lot of the thought is going into diversion programs, and that's why we have the drug court programs that a lot of us here sit on, and we're trying to get the help. The people that need the help, the ones that are the addicts that are not selling just to sell for money, but are selling to support their habits, those are the people we're trying to get programs for and treatment for. You prosecute them, you put them back into the same people, places, things, and you know what happens? They re-offend. And so we're, we're back at square one. So we're really, it's a big switch in my mind as far as a prosecutor, I've been a career prosecutor for what, twenty years now, and it's always been about, you know, throwing the drug dealers in jail, prison, whatever it takes, but you know what? We can't prosecute our way out of this crime. Heroin and opiate abuse is rampant. It's an epidemic, not just in our county, but it's national. And you can see every day, if you're on Facebook, any social media, you see the postings by family members who are losing their loved ones to heroin and never saw it coming. It can take one time to use heroin, and these people become addicted. And, and that's scary. As a mom, I am so into like investing fear in my children, don't ever use drugs, but you know what? The bottom line is, it can happen to anybody in this room, and that's what, one thing we need to keep aware of. It's not socioeconomic, it's not bad anymore. It's, this is a crime and a, you know, a real epidemic that we need to start thinking outside the box. So, I have welcomed LEAD in our local communities, I think our local law enforcement, we've been working with. They were nice enough and kind enough to take time to go down, along with Captain Tibbetts and the State Police. That's gonna take, I think, a much bigger effort to get it statewide. However, our local law enforcement can do that now. So it's something we're working on, I'm not saying it's gonna happen overnight, but it's definitely an option for our, our community.
I think it's Major Tibbetts. Major Tibbetts, I keep looking, sorry.
So one of the, so going through them, that was an intervention. One of the things we have that's really fascinating is ESPT, which stands for, where is it? Sorry. The ESPT implementation is underway in Elizabeth Town Community Hospital right here. It's a new, they actually are creating a new case management position that has been established to support this initiative. So this is an intervention that will come in and identify people up and put them into services. But one of the, I mean, this is really state-of-the-art. Elizabeth Town has taken a huge lead. Their emergency room gentleman, Bruce Berry, has not only, I mean, just taken this under his wing, and he also is now in charge of Ticonderoga Hospital. his wing, and he also is now in charge of Ticonderoga Hospital, which is wonderful for us. So we're very thrilled to have ESPT in our area and to LEED to potential screening assessment and then referral to treatment. Go ahead, Brooke. And so we end with treatment and recovery, and these are the final two objectives, which are naturally evolving and developing as we work to reduce the stigma. Eliminate barriers to effective intervention and treatment programs and increase education and awareness. We want to establish and enhance peer support networks. We want to cultivate a supportive recovery environment. And so we're building awareness, and let's build it together. That being said, we also have a group, the prevention team has offered, as well as ECHO will work together to get any committee you would like, if you have specific needs. We will come to any town hall meeting, anywhere you want, if you'd like us to talk to your constituents. So again, we're in every school. We intend to be in 2018, I'm sorry, 2017, roll into that 2017-18 school year. But Doug Tobique from the prevention team, as well as our coalition members, have made a pledge that if you'd like somebody to come to speak to your town about heroin and opiates and what's going on, or some referral systems and things we have in place, or things you want us to hear, we're open to do that. You can contact myself or Kristi, and we will make that happen. It's absolutely a pledge from our organization, from our coalition. And that's it. Thank you so much. Any questions?
I think it's a wonderful program. It's a lot more widespread than people want to believe, and Kristi, you hit it right, nail right on the head. It's everywhere. It could be, it has no bounds by money, place, and society. It's everywhere. I guess my question goes, that link is on our county website?
It is.
Can I put that on my town website to get to it?
Sure. Absolutely. And if it's not, well, you can call us, and we'll make sure. Brooke's handing out a flyer as well. I also sent you the flyer. You should have got it in your email for duty. Or is it in the packet that I sent today? But if it doesn't copy, let us know. We're happy to fix it. Yes, the answer is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I've been hearing anecdotally that there's been a great increase in Narcan interventions throughout. Give me an idea of the level of magnitude on that, you know, in the county.
How many we've administered, or how many training?
How many we've been administering, or have been administering in the county?
So it's an interesting moving dot. I can't answer that. Every time, there's a different law enforcement person. They could tell you the state troopers have been keeping track of it. I mean, Patty Bashel could answer it individually, but it's unfortunate, but there isn't a well-known system to counter it all. So I can tell you that it's increased. I can tell you anecdotally that the state police have said they're finding it takes more than one kit to take somebody out of it, because they're so, whatever, high from it, so sometimes it takes more than one or two doses of Narcan. And I can get more information, and how about that, and I get it out to you. That's probably the best answer.
Okay. I just want to say I applaud your efforts, yourself, the DA, the mental health. I mean, I hear about this quite frequently, and I think it certainly is a priority. Unfortunately, you know, I know of instances where this has taken people's lives. I also know that Vice Chair Gilland and myself toured social services, I think approximately six weeks ago. It was kind of eye-opening in talking with people there, like the amount of families this has touched and the increase in foster children and whatnot, and it goes back to this addiction. It is really a crisis. And again, don't think it can't happen in your town, because chances are, it's already there. So I applaud your efforts.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Moving on today, if you're off for the AG, Kristi Lurkeys.
Good morning. I have one budget amendment this morning, which is to increase revenue and appropriations in the amount of $12,750 to accept DISRIP money.
Resolution by Mr. Joe Donal, endorsement by Mr. Joe Donal. Questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
And?
Questions for our Kristi today involving the Office of the AG? Anything more to offer, Kristi?
No, everybody has my monthly update, so if you have any questions, feel free to reach out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was easy.
Yeah.
Transcription, Nancy Dugan, who is not here today, but she has provided a report for you in your packet. Is there anything else to come before Human Services Committee today? There being none, it is adjourned.